This conference will now be recorded.
It's all right, you're fixing to leave the plate.
No, I didn't. Okay, Mayor Roberts?
Yeah, I'm here.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes, here.
Mr. Gandy?
Here.
Mr. Vogel?
Here.
Mr. What?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Tridio, yes, when you lead us in our indication, that's it. Thank you. Uh, value here, please. Lord, Lord, thank you so much for us gathering here this evening, Lord. As always, Lord, we always look to overcome hurdles and make the best decision for our community, Lord. Allows we have open minds, Lord, and have the vision for looking out for the future of our community, Lord. Lord, thank you so much for the Fourth of July, uh, there was no accidents, and that we had a great time as a community and as one community together, Lord. And Lord, also want to thank you for all the good rain we've received today. It seemed like it may rain some more. We thank you for the blessing, Lord. And most of all, thank you for our commissioners, our citizens and our special staff that are always here to, uh, day and day night, when they need it, Lord, when they're asked to call. And we ask you to bless them, Lord. Amen.
Lord, if it pleases.
My pleasure to meet you, Suter Miller, of the State of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under one government, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag, the state of New Mexico, the city of Timbuktu, of perfect friendships, and all the unity of cultures.
You may be seated. Lord, open for a motion on the agenda.
I would like to make a motion from the Resilient 2023 East of One.
So again. Okay, we have a motion in a second on removal of this, uh, resolution, oh seven one, right? Discussion.
I do. See if we can get this out of the way, either say yay or nay to it. One reason I want to say it is because we have a lot, a lot pending to disclose about the year here in July one, which was just the previous week. Uh, we still have many of our reports pending, but we also have the final quarter of the fourth quarter of this last fiscal year going on. I think we need to make a decision tonight, uh, either going with Mr. Fiera or not, because the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost us as well as the more it's put us in a, put us in a, uh, a worse situation than what we're in.
Now I kind of feel like we should have been going in close about it and have explained this a little more than what we do.
Yeah, I think we ought to have it open. I think we, we have a lot pending out there. There is more pending out there than, than what we, uh, what we can, pretty much what's at the surface right now. I think it needs to be opened. That way we have a better understanding where we are at and, uh, and why it's very important that we make a decision properly, because to find someone else to do the service or to wait another ninety days and to see if we even get a treasurer in here, uh, may put us in a bad situation. And I, and I'd rather be proactive than reactive, uh, especially when it comes to this, because I know three board members up here, we've gone through this already once and, uh, it was cost us dearly. And, uh, and our bond rating went down as well as our credibility with the state went down. Where we weren't our fiscal agent for a year, and I just feel that we just need to move on this. We just, it's, it's, it's very important for the, for the, for the city of Lovington, for us to make a decision tonight, either go with it or not go with it, and what is our solution, uh, to, to the current situation.
Any further discussion? Shannon, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Wait, 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 wait.
You just said the wrong name.
Yeah, because I was talking about self-identity, but no.
Commissioner Vogel?
No.
Commissioner What?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Wow. I'm going to miss this channel. Having read, read through the packet, there are two service contracts that fall into that resolution. We were going to have to choose or discuss both of them this evening in order to even approve either one. I'm going to vote yes, because we need a little bit more discussion on it. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to watch consideration of the minutes of June twenty-sixth. Oh, wait, wait, we're still on the agenda. Oh, we are. It was three to two on that, on the removal of that. Now we need one. I really moved. I thought she was admitting the, making a motion for the.
Bring the agenda with that review.
With that, okay, move. All right. I think I understood. Okay, you may be right. I'm sorry. I got long enough to talk. Chen, is that the way it was?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner. Please go to the, to your next. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of the minutes, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Okay, we have motion in a second for adoption of the minutes. Discussion. Okay, Shannon, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes. Brings us to our commissioner of staff report. Ms. Shannon?
Um, Mayor Commissioners, I sent y'all a, uh, an email about the convention for the municipal league that will be in Lockington this year, from the twenty-ninth through the, uh, February first, or not first, actually, September first. And I also sent this flyer on proposed, um, agenda. And, um, City Manager Miranda, he did point out that they had Albert Purkey at the top with, um, Farmington at the bottom, and it is in Farmington. We can pray about that.
For sure, in Farmington.
Yes, it is. Farmington.
All right.
So, like, we'll let them know as soon as we can. In how many?
Thank you.
That's all.
That's all? Okay. Any questions for Shannon? Okay, let's get it.
I will think at this time.
All right, thank you. T?
First of all, I want to thank the Mayor Commissioner and City Manager for allowing me to be the interim chief here. So I just want to thank you personally on that. Second of all, everything's going well. We, um, in the process of getting the new camera system at the PD, uh, security cameras. So we're in the process of getting that done.
They have a whole back there?
No, but we need to get it. We need to be up to date when we bring it through the laws and stuff, have cameras.
Yes.
Very nice words.
Absolutely. Any questions? Any further G?
Yes.
All right, so thank you. Party?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, so love to you, may have heard, Herb Smith. He was a LFD retiree. He passed away on Friday night. The funeral will be this Friday at eleven a.m. at Hillcrest Baptist Church, and the fire department will be providing an honor card for that. So he's one of our retirees, and we feel that, you know, he is doing his best, and we want to give that to you. So, uh, our outdoor warning systems, uh, the guidance to testing and activation. I sent all of that to y'all, but I do have it up here. So this just pretty much talks about what the sirens will be set off for. And it talks about your wind seventy miles an hour or over, that's when your, uh, big tree limbs break, some trees are uprooted, there's smaller trees, so at that point it's considered dangerous to, to life and health. And the hail, anything golf ball size or greater, same thing. And then, uh, of course tornadoes. So in a multi-alarm system that has different alarms, they still suggest that you use one alarm, because if somebody here, if you try to do different alarms, they try to decide, well, what is this for? You don't want that. You just want people to get in undercover. That's the point of the alarm, is to get people in, outs, from outside, and undercover. And, uh, most fatalities experience tornadoes, this severe weather, this stuff, come because of like, uh, falling trees and large branches and stuff like that. So it's get them in, get them out, and then at that point, you know, listen to radios. If you have TV service, if it's still in, you know, sometimes your TV channels will give your weather updates on the, the severe storms and stuff, as well as your, uh, radio, sometimes the radio will give updates as well. So I put all this together, I just, you know, it's something for y'all to look at. If y'all decide that's what we want to go with, then we can adopt it. And then the last G, which is the, uh, public safety answering point, this is pretty much for what we would give to the public. It's just this, the first three pages, and just a short little, this is what we'll do. This is where we're going to test it. We'll test it the first Tuesday of every month, and so on and so forth. So if y'all agree with that, then we can either, if it's something that y'all want to vote on, we can put it on the agenda to be voted on, or we can put it in place. I don't know whether to require that. So, and if there's anything on it that y'all would like to change, if y'all.
Is there anything truly different than what our policy, even though we're not, we struggled with that? Is there anything different in this from a previous policy, resolution, or whatever?
I haven't found it that I can actually find that says this is what we're going to go by. That's it. So this is the problem with just moving forward, ready?
I do, too.
Yeah. So to go along with that.
Okay.
So Code Three has isolated the problem in the control board that we're having with our sirens. They have, uh, order parts. They're hoping they will come in this week to get that together to where at least the system we have will work until we can, uh, get a complete upgrade of the system. I am still waiting on the codes from Code Three as far as that system knows, adding new sirens and upgrading what we have. And then I have spoke with, uh, Ms. Lopez, and she is still working on trying to find a grant that will be like, because those are hard to, they're hard to find. Something like that.
I've heard that finders is expensive.
Well.
Because really, if it's hard to find, what do we want, something that's not hard to find in case we have to get parts to fix right here?
The, uh,
Grant.
Grant is what's hard to find.
Okay.
It's hard to find grants on, I mean, you go through FIBA, you can go through these different, and it's hard to find.
Right.
So she is still working on that. And, uh, I've heard of some others that I just recently heard on Saturday that I'm looking into as well, see if maybe we can get grants through people who, the system we actually had supposedly might be able to get grants through them. So that's stuff that I want to go to look at. Zachary Crank, the firefighter that was involved in the wreck on Easter Sunday, is back at work. He started today. He is back on light duty. So at least he is back and he's, he's started, hopefully get back into swing stuff. Of course, you know, he has his restrictions from his doctor for right now, so that's why we have him on light duty. They did say he could return for light duty. Other than that, my numbers for June, we had two hundred and forty-four EMS calls, thirty-six interfacility transfers, twelve airport transfers, seventy-five refusal, canceled DOA, thirteen fatal calls, nineteen fire calls. So that gives us a, a total for our second quarter. We've got, we had seven hundred and fifty EMS, ninety-six interfacility transfers, fifty-six airport, two hundred and sixty-seven refused and canceled DOA, twenty-eight fatal calls, seventy-two fire calls. So that is all I have at this time on the stage.
All right, questions? Yes, sir. Um, how many fires did we have on the Fourth of July? I just want to know how many.
The actual Fourth of July, the actual Fourth of July, I think we only had two. Yeah. We, we had, I'm going to be honest, I'm going to be honest, we actually were really.
That rain Monday?
We, well, that was, that helped for the Fourth of July. I mean, we only had two on the Fourth of July, but even the couple of weeks leading up to the Fourth of July, we only had four or five.
Really, were they fireworks related?
Yes. Well, that's all I'm talking about, just fireworks related, because that's, we only had like four or five, and they were all, we managed to, to go out good. So, good job, love.
That's right. Hey, good call, too. Other than that. Other than that, it sounded like a war load. Exactly.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I did want to bring up that, uh, that, of course, Mr. W is, they did the fireworks show. Oh, my God, they set it up, but they ran it, they did it, and I wanted to tell them that they've done a really good job. I think it, the program was pretty much the same that we've always had, so, for the last few years, so it went really well. And they said as of right now, they feel that they want to continue doing it in the future. So.
Any further questions? Here, you may. Mr. Vogel?
As I always say, thank you all for coming. Smaller crowd than I am. Again, thank you all. And, uh, again, buy local, eat local, shop local. Please do, please do. I won't go into a lot of speech, but it helps everybody out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Miss. Ms. Shannon?
Yes, um, I was surprised not to do that, that contract. I was discussing that. Normally we have discussions prior to action. Don't, don't, what really, really concerns me is that we haven't finished a DAF report. How many, how many candidates have you received, told us that we even have candidates that even apply for this position? For the, uh. But, yes, we just got one in yesterday, or today, excuse me. Okay. Basically, I mean, what, she's from Pennsylvania, and Shannon, I don't know anything else about them. But what concerns me most is that, I mean, we've been through this, this path before, and right now, we still got to close up here. We got the DFA, we got a new budget out there. And by the time this lady, let's say, if she's our candidate, comes from Pennsylvania, by the time she gets here, you're up in that ninety days, maybe six months, what are we going to do then? That's, that's my thing. And not to say that I wasn't agreeing with, with Ed Carroll coming in, I just wanted us to put on the table what we have in front of us, what challenge, what hurdles do we have to overcome right now until we get someone hired in that position? Because the more DFA reports we have, the more states will come down on us, the more we have to come down on us, the, the more that, let's say all these grants that we're applying for, it's a no-go. I guarantee it's no-go. We, we turn in three, uh, DFA reports late, that we're going to go apply for these grants that we're all talking about every day? Uh, they're going to say, well, you don't even have your paperwork yet. How can we fund you when you don't even have your accounting, uh, area yet? So it's a big picture. It's not just about voting down someone or, or bigger, and maybe he's too high. And, and I understand, because I, I saw the ticket too, what it was to present, and I thought, you know, it's a big ticket. And then sometimes I look at the bigger, and I was going to go, damn, we're going to lose out on grants, we're going to get, lose our credit rating, we're going to start losing everything, depending on how long this lasts. Maybe we'll get lucky, ninety days, we get somebody here, maybe they're fast enough to. And then, and then, let's say, I'm just looking at the example for this Pennsylvania lady. She doesn't know New Mexico municipality, uh, financing, so she's, that's a learning there, you know? So it's, it, it's a broader picture, and we got to start looking at the big picture. Because it worries me that we're going to find ourselves in another situation where it's going to take us another year to get out of it, and or six months, and in the interim, we're going to be applying for grants, uh, I C I P money and all this, and I say, hmm, they're your finances yet. Here we are, all pretty much where we wanted to be at, still not over the hurdle. But, uh, you know, I was still, you know, Tracy left, I mean, she was, she wasn't, and she was as good as what we were going to pay her, as what we're paying her. But, you know, she just needed some help, some tools, and, and a new finance director. I mean, but that would have helped us all, but with her not being here, even her liabilities, I don't know if we have to count who's, who's going to, all our liabilities, all our account receivables coming in.
May I, may I add, that's, sir?
Yes.
I, I would echo that. I think the one thing that has changed since we started advertising for a finance director is we have lost the city manager, and we have lost the finance director, or an acting finance director. So as it stands now, we cannot do our fourth quarter DFA report. We cannot do our fiscal year DFA report. Our bank resolutions, reconciliations, last month we've done, it was April, and we haven't done audit preparation, and we're already late on the audit.
Yeah.
So I would just say that we need to do something soon.
Yeah. So that's another thing. We've got an audit coming up, starts, it's supposed to be, turn for our audit comes in October. So that's why I'm saying we got to look at the big picture, and, and I, and like I said, I wasn't going to say that I was going to agree with Ed coming up here with his, his proposal. I just want to put everything out on the table, see what's in front of us, see what, how big of a hurdle we have to overcome, and what is going to be our, our solution to that, our, our problem, because it is a major problem, it is. We did a five percent raise, we, you know, we got all this money from the county, and yet our treasury department is not solid. And, you know, it's just, it's just very, uh, uh, just surprising to see that happen, but that's all.
Mr. What? Mr. Gandy?
Thanks for the fireworks. It was awesome. My grants, it was phenomenal. I did have one person text me relentlessly about the war zone he was living in, um, but, you know, other than that, um, thank you. Appreciate it. It was lots of fun. And I didn't make it to the, the part. I'm pretty sure that those festivities went over very well. So congratulations to those people for putting on those events. Thank the good Lord for the rain that he got before that covered my backside there. So other than that, we're good. Thank you.
Oh, what's her?
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, the, the budget was sent to the invite. We do await their approval. They haven't sent it through yet, so. Um, other than that, we know that situation, and we try and let that something together.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, member of the public, members of the public. The city has engaged Suter Miller to complete a three-phase asset management program, as was presented to you at the last meeting. This will begin with a top-to-bottom asset listing, which will encompass the water, wastewater, equipment, fleet, facilities, and roadway asset networks within the city of Lovington. The initial phase also includes training for all department heads, finance, and planning, and zoning, who make up our asset management team to make sure this, there is a regular asset management data collection. In phase two, the data collected will be provided to Suter Miller in its spreadsheet form to allow data entry into the asset registry. This app, this assessment will work to include asset description, material, quantity, data installation, existing condition, useful life, asset valuation, failure mode, and asset criticality. The third phase is the implementation phase. This scope of work will include all work required by the New Mexico State grant funding agencies, and this is very important. Also during the third phase, Suter Miller will transfer the water and sewer paper maps into a digital format for future use by the city when software and hardware are obtained that will allow field crews to access the mapping and asset data remotely via the cloud. There are many additional asset, uh, details of this asset management program, which I would be happy to provide the commission if they are interested. Secondly, we have posted for the city manager, finance director, accounting clerk positions, um, one position for wastewater, and two summer health positions for parks, recreation, and cemeteries. We are also continuing the process for procuring an auditor. Uh, we are starting a little late in the process, even though the fiscal year just ended, the time to start procurement for an auditor is about six months before the end of the fiscal year. I'm happy to announce that Lee County has awarded the city an additional one hundred and twenty-five thousand to be used in the operations of the animal shelter. I met with Mr. Chip Low of the county finance department and obtained a list of our outstanding funding from the county. We have four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of uncollected funds allocated by Lee County, the breakdown of which is Lovington Athletic Fields, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Lovington ADA Street Improvements, one hundred thousand dollars. Lovington Operational Cleanup, fifty thousand dollars. And as I just mentioned, Lovington Animal Services, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This does not include the five point seven million the county authorized to us last month. So once again, thank you to the Lee County Commissioners and my Gallagher for their generosity to the city of Lovington. The commission will note on this expense report that we have spent approximately two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of COVID funds to continue upgrading the skated water monitoring system for our water and wastewater departments. We are also making much-needed equipment purchases for those departments. Uh, finally, the following is good news for the city, but will not be welcomed as such by the public. I've done a lot of work in the past couple of weeks in reviewing all aspects of our water usage to include billing, and it has come to light that we have been applying the wrong rates to our residential and commercial customers for both water and wastewater since at least twenty twenty-one. Uh, and I will attempt to explain this if you indulge me. So. This is the current breakdown of our water billing. So for a typical residential customer, the first three thousand, uh, three thousand gallons you get for a flat fee of twenty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. For every thousand gallons you use after that, it's two dollars. Wastewater, same concept, but a different rate. Wastewater is calculated directly off of water usage, except if you have a lawn-only line, a strangle line, that does not get calculated into wastewater. But by and large, these are going to be the same calculations. Um, commercial, you see, is the first five thousand gallons you get at a flat rate, over five thousand you get at that rate. And these are all subject to the automatic two percent of your increases, but I'm not even going to touch that tonight. This has nothing to do with it. So I'm going to show you now what we've been billing, how we've been billing. So everything in red is what we're doing now. So because Tyler encoded incorrectly moved decimal points, this is what we've been doing. Instead of people getting the first three thousand gallons for a flat fee of twenty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents, then they're getting the first thirty thousand gallons for that one price. For every thousand gallons after that, instead of paying two dollars, they've been paying twenty cents. So magnify this by four thousand residential clients and, uh, seven hundred commercial clients. Um, same thing here with wastewater. Uh, and this is for residential, okay? So if you go to the next line, commercial, five thousand gallons, thirty-four, forty-seven, well, they're getting fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand gallons for that flat fee. And then over fifty thousand gallons, instead of paying two dollars and ten cents, they've been paying twenty-one cents. So I figured the easiest way to break this out is to show my own bill. So this is my bill. If you notice, we're behind two months in the billing cycle. That's another story for another day, but, so your bill is probably down to water, wastewater, garbage, sales tax, total. We're not going to go talk about solid waste tonight. Usage here, never do this, this is in thousands of gallons. So me, I live in a twelve-hundred, thirteen-hundred square foot home. I'm by myself. I have a small lawn. I use their, I, in this period, in April, I use thirteen thousand gallons. Now, I, I fill twelve months of my bills. I average between three and four thousand gallons in the winter months to twelve to fourteen thousand gallons in the summer months. So one thing I did learn is when the weather gets warmer, we can triple and quadruple our water use. Pools, people watering, that's without that, I mean, without that question. So I use thirteen thousand gallons for each year. So this is what I was billed. But if you calculated the right way, I should have been billed $22.89 for the first 3,000 gallons, which is what I paid. But I use 10,000 more gallons than the initial 3,000 gallons. So I should have been billed 10, for 10,000 gallons, minus $2, for an additional $20. I'm gonna take my bill up, $20, 42.89. Same with sewer. I paid the flat rate, but I should have paid an additional $11. It also affects the sales tax. So it translates into me, I should have paid $129 instead of $96.84. But percentage-wise, this is the key thing, that's a 33% increase. We told some people at random, there is someone who provides a swimming pool in the south end of town who paid just about $200. They spent, I don't know, one of these here, I think it was 50, 80,000 gallons in the month. Their bill should have been a thousand, should have been $1,000. So their bill would have gone up by 400%. So how many people go over the 3,000 rate even? Two-thirds. I looked at all our clients. About two-thirds of us in the summer months, in these months, go above 3,000. Like I said, being myself single, I averaged 3,000, 4,000 in January and February. So we do know that water goes up, usage goes up, but it gets hotter. To Commissioner Gandy's point, a couple of meetings ago, about her consumption. So we have two systems. We have the census system, S E N S U S, which actually monitors the meters, most of them. A handful of meters are still red by, you know, magnitude. And then you have the Tyler encode system, which calculates the billing rates. But Tyler encode, this is where this was screwed up. But if you look, what we started to do is we're not gonna look at Tyler to calculate our consumption anymore because it's under billing, it's under reporting on consumption. So if you look at the census figures, we're averaging, we're consuming about 100 million gallons a month. So there's not this massive water. They leak each somewhere. We may be losing a couple million, but for the month of April, we produced about 115, we used about 113 million feet, used a lot of water. I would have never thought I used 13,000 gallons, just me.
Wow.
You do look clean though. Fodernice.
So, this is, this is a 30, potentially, you know, 10 to 50% increase. I think we should increase the commercial customers immediately because they can afford it. I think under the assumption of customers, we, we ease them into it as the summer months progress, and then as the weather cools off, their water usage is gonna decline. But I'll tell you one thing for sure. When people start paying more money, they're gonna consume less water, they're gonna use less water. But I always used to wonder, why do I never pay not more than 96? I have two poly parts. That's why my flat rate is a little higher because I have two tranchards. I never paid more than $96,84, and I should have been mostly here. So I know it's gonna be extremely unpopular, but the way to look at this is, let's say it's a 30% increase in income for the city. Our water and wastewater taken $3 million a year. 30% of that is $1 million. So potentially, we've been losing a million dollars a year. And this is not a rate hike. Virginia, this is not a rate hike. This is restoring rates where they should have been all along. Other inefficiencies, we have 188 idle accounts or meters. That means we're not billing and they're using water.
Are these residential, commercial, or?
Mostly residential. They're called idle meters. And I told them, Bernardo, we've got two months to shut them off. We're gonna shut them off. There's 500 scale meters. And those are meters where people have tampered with them, so because the meters are really able, you know, red by radio, so they, they change the wires or they get damaged. So they're still losing, using water, but we can't read. So that's, we're losing a lot of money there. But this thing over at least two years, it could be more than two years, we've been losing up to a million a year by not billing properly. So, well, why don't you help me out a lot?
In addition, uh, you know, we've had a lot of discussion on this.
Yes.
We were, we were effectively going on the Tyler system to calculate our
Consumption.
Our consumption. Which is why we were this tremendous 90 million gallons difference or whatever.
Yeah, it was lost. Yeah, I pulled the numbers for, uh, April. Uh, residential consumption was 130 million, commercial was like another nine or 12, nine or 10 million. So it's mostly residential, but one thing's for sure, people use three to four times the water in the summer than they do in the winter. So, but I think, as unpopular as this is gonna be, once we bring it into effect, I don't think we're gonna have the water problems in the future. We still gotta work on the system. But when people start getting ahead with these bills, they're gonna think twice about watering their sidewalk for three hours in the afternoon and wasting water.
How are we going to implement this as far as no longer using Tyler? What's our progression here? What are we gonna do?
We've got, um, meetings set up with both census and Tyler. Because like, one decimal point has cost the city at least $2 million. It's crazy. It shouldn't happen. And so we're gonna talk to them about that and we're gonna get with the water department to cut off these accounts that have been taking our water for nothing. And on the other, um, 500 scale meters, we're gonna fix. It just requires the manpower of going out there and, and staying on top of it every month. So, but I don't want to cause hardship to the people all the months, so we're gonna try to find a way to phase this in. We're also gonna put, I'm gonna push it out to the public. We're gonna put a newsletter in the next water bill. I'm gonna try to get on the radio on Friday with Tom. We're gonna put it on Facebook. So they don't think it's a water rate increase. It's not. If you look at it, they've been kind of getting free water to some extent for two or three years, you know. We all have.
We have to remember our senior citizens get their 10% discounts also.
Right.
They, they do.
I, I'm assuming.
I, I've looked at it before and I brought that up to past city managers. They are entitled to that. So.
Yeah, it is.
I almost swallowed food.
I didn't.
I'm gonna open looking.
I appreciate your attention. That's all I have to say.
Questions?
We appreciate.
I'd like, I'd like to open this a little bit for discussion while, while we're on this topic because it's gonna be, there, when we implement it, then it's gonna be a, and I talked to a fixed income, uh, person, explained the situation, and this was a thought, and I'm just gonna throw it out there, and I thought it was a great idea. They said, we understand the situation. Could you, for the first month, if we're gonna be billing here in the next 10 days?
Yeah.
Okay. Could you show in this one what it, what it should have been? So that they can prepare for what it's gonna be. And I thought, you know, that's a really good idea. And kind of let them know, hey, you know, this is what you've been, this is what you've been paying. You can see that. And they all agreed that they had only gotten the minimal. Uh, but show, and they said, then we can start trimming down. And since we are two months in arrears, I know we turned the switch on to immediately put it into effect to, to raise it up to where it should have been, but maybe we could take this time since they're, they would be now paying the, the correct rate for water that was two months ago. We kind of are in, in, in a limbo zone here. Maybe use at least one of those months to show, okay, this is where you would have been easing on. And this is just a scam. There can be adaptations or whatever, but at least, you know, that's, that gives everybody an idea. And if, for those that have been really watering, and, and I, like, this is something I thought, maybe we'll put water in the street. You know, if your bill all of a sudden goes from 88, 8801, if you're just a single refuge container, I'm sorry.
8801.
8801. And all of a sudden, it's $250, you know. You might be like, oh, maybe I need to fix that water sprinkler that is just pouring into the gutter, you know, so.
You don't think twice.
Exactly. So.
We could, uh, since it's so easy to do by just changing a decimal.
Yeah, let's, let's remember.
We could put two sets of bills in. We could put in the actual bill right now. This is what your bill would have been. We do have 39, 3900 to 4,000 accounts, but, but we. No, I just, we're gonna try to get the message out there and educate you.
So my, my comment would have been, so we're two months behind, right? So we won't build for July, for, well, September?
Yes, sir.
So since, you know, I'm sure I think we ought to build for the last two months, why don't we give them two months and then to get caught up, to get, that way everybody has notification. There's plenty of Facebook screening. We get that whole cycle out of it. And everybody kind of is prepared that, oh, maybe I should be watching what I do here. And give, give them that 60 days here to, to fall into this abruptly. It's not gonna be easy at all.
We could do that. It was a very big month because people are getting their yards and gardens started. This is a lot of water.
But they could also ask for their usage. We may have to go in and for people that come and ask, what would my usage have been in June, let's say. Of course, they're fixing to find out next month what it was in June. And so that maybe will help deter them because for the past two years that I've been involved in, we've run into this water situation, you know, where all of a sudden we, we calculated uh, what we could produce and then we showed what we were billing for, where's all the water? Well, we were using it.
Yes.
Obviously, which is good and bad news. Uh, but at least then they, when we start talking about, hey, this is what it's gonna cost, people will have it, have the time for a few months to get prepared. And like I said, maybe fix their sprinklers. You can turn the water hose off, but when you're not, when you're washing your car and you go in and fall asleep for two hours or something like that.
What are the commission's thoughts about raising commercial customers and you do?
They are, I think, I think, I think we need to be fair across the board. If we're gonna face it and face it. I think that's, that'd be the appropriate thing because that, we're not, I think that would probably be, also from a legal stance, I think that would probably be the right, I think that would be more moral, you know.
One of our larger commercial customers was paying $1,800 a month where they should have paid $14,000 by month.
Yeah. And the only reason I say that is because if you're siding one month, siding the other, then they can make an argument why.
We go through the toll booth.
Yeah.
I was gonna say.
He's already smiled.
You know, we're trying to be even.
I think it's probably a good idea. I don't know if you're obligated or not, but I think it's probably a good idea to at least give that maybe a month's head up because if I was operating a business and not everybody is operating large oilfield businesses that, you know, everybody presumes you're killing it. There are other businesses out there that if you went from 1,800 to 14,000, would have a pretty big, big impact of that. Hey, try them to lay off employees or close their business, et cetera. So, I think, you know, legally, could you just say, hey, our, our software has been miscalculated starting tomorrow? Yeah, I think you could. But what kind of, you know, implications is that gonna have? Is that gonna be the best way to approach it? So, so I would still give them a little bit of heads up because that change from 1,800 to 14,000 could, you know, put a restaurant out of business or something like that. So, fair enough.
Schools, because they, uh, when I was looking into this several months ago, schools were, and I'll take on a little bit, were 2,600 total for all the schools.
Yeah.
And I said, I pay 600. You only, you water all of these fields. You do all of this. And I, and I, my first question was, when I was in elementary school, they all had their own wells. That, well, Yarroque did. That was one.
Some schools did, not all.
Okay. And I said, are they using their own wells to do this? No. Uh, the majority of it comes from the city. And I'm like, they only pay four times what I do.
Yeah.
And they're, all of this, we have some problems. So, yeah. And I agree, we, they may have a big shock factor. And, you know, now, if this was limited to two years ago, give or take, everybody all of a sudden got a huge decrease and they didn't come in and say, oh, by the way, you know, thanks for the, yeah, for the reduction in water rate or whatever. So.
We're like sending Christmas cards to, to our software.
Exactly. Anyway, so I, I agree with you that we could, but at the same time, you know, a sudden impact could be devastating.
We'll start the education campaign.
I think that's great. And I think we probably should put something on discussion probably for our next meeting. Show, that way we can be the clients, and this is what we're gonna, this is, not an action item. I just knew it was coming. It wasn't on the agenda. And I'd like to, I wanted to get some discussion so that we. Sorry. Anything further on that?
I think, uh, one other thing is, uh, on the, I know we should have had an audit three months back, and we did not. And now, uh, it's already passed the deadline. So what, what is the repercussions on that if we don't have one? And we don't start, have you looked into that, that side of it?
You have things on our, on our audit with the state?
I mean, we already got, I mean, I know that. And like, right, and I didn't say it like that, but I understand currently that since that is already gonna be one audit finding after this, for last fiscal year, because we didn't have, we didn't have an audit.
Another RFP.
Yeah, by, for us. Now we're gonna have another one.
I did speak with Ms. Willoughby this afternoon, and she, she, she might be interested in doing our audit again. She said it would be more expensive. She's gonna send out a proposal this week.
We did have an RFP out there, but I don't believe we got it. I know, and we didn't get any.
No, we did not.
We need to be actively looking for.
Yeah.
An audit.
Audit.
And nothing from the municipal league or the column on that deal.
All right. Anything further? Ms. Ball?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. So in the end of the T, Main Street project, they opened Love Street through traffic, okay? You have Love, two lanes of traffic in the center going east, west to commercial, and then that commercial would open up towards the floor. Uh, why they're doing that is there's still electrical work going on on the sides between Love and commercial. They plan to close the intersection of Main and D on Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning?
Wednesday morning. I'm gonna start demoing out that. I did have a question that they have been asking me. The Constructors Inc. has asked, do we want to continue the phasing like we did on D where we do the whole width of the road? Or do we want to do half of the road, come back, do half the road, move, do half the road, move, do half the road? You're moving detours each time. You're changing that up. They go up one side, come back to the other side. So you're affecting public and citizens twice and businesses twice. So are we would be, or would we be okay with them doing both sidewalk to sidewalk, whole area for the 850 feet of each face?
They did all the parts. They make sure they have all the parts. They ran out.
Yeah, I think, I think it's still an increment, so we agree on it.
It's still 850 feet increments in the base. It would just keep it from being one half and then the other half, it would be the whole.
No, I think, I think they'd get a better layout if they, I think, because in the middle, it's an end of crack ups.
Yes, it will. You get a better finished product.
I'm gonna, we're just, we've already voted on it. I'd say let's stay on track. And prod them every chance you get. They're not here tonight.
All right. And then our petroleum storage tank bureau, the New Mexico Petroleum State Board, uh, they have moved their start date for a site cleanup uh, that is also in the intersection of Main and D. Uh, we have free floating fuel on the water table underneath the intersection. So they, underground petroleum bureau is doing remediation. Uh, they will start that on July 25th. So luckily, it's gonna coincide with while this is shut down. So there's not extra shutdown of that intersection. So kind of getting two things got it wedged in that intersection.
What is their projected time that they're going to be doing remediation?
Uh, well, once they get the equipment in, they said it would just depend. They would keep doing the testing. They don't have a date of when they would be. Uh, well, once they get the equipment in, they said it would just depend. They would keep doing the testing. They don't have a date of when they would be.
But they can continue. Let's just say that. Oh, I know. But, uh, what I'm saying is, we're not going to slow construction.
No.
They can continue.
Correct. All this is going way beneath where instructors is at anyways. Okay.
You're basically just drilling some.
Yes.
Modern unit here.
Yes, they'll be drilling diagonal from over by Love Street on a property that they've got contract with and from behind McDonald's. So it'll be drilled diagonally under McDonald's and under Austin's and under the intersections. And then I have, uh, so my planning and zoning meeting tomorrow, I'm gonna cancel it. The one action item I had, uh, the owner did not complete paperwork. So it just heads up that that meeting will be canceled. Uh, the ETZ Commission meeting last week on the seventh. We had, uh, five different items in our ETZ up for zone changes or special uses. So the choke property, which is, uh, on the Arkansas Junction, about a half a mile off of Earl Lacquer. He wanted to change his zone for eighty acres of property to allow a trucking company to come in on that property. Uh, they did approve that. Of course, all of these have to go on to the ETZ authority. Uh, we had one at five oh two Bone Star Lane. This property had asked over a year ago to change the zone. Uh, it was tabled at the county levels. The county had asked us to revisit it. We looked at doing a special non-conforming use permit for them so that way they could, uh, give them a year to move their trucking company somewhere else instead of changing the zone. Because the county was very against changing the zone. That is out in the Waters Six Shooter area. Um, we had another one, uh, twenty one oh one West Burr. Uh, that is the subdivision, the Bible subdivision out, uh, west of Seventeenth Street off of Gum. We had a, again, a trucking company in there. We had the majority of the property owners in that area sign a petition to not change it. So again, we approved this special non-conforming use for one year to give that time to move that, uh, business out of that location. Um, we had another one at twenty twenty three West Oak Avenue. Oak is north of Gum Street in the county, uh, out by the store. Um, this gentleman has one single water hauling truck. He doesn't own a company. He just runs that one truck. I don't understand that.
He contracts.
Yeah, that's it. He contracts out to others to do it. Um, so they did give him a special non-conforming to, as, and as long as he only owns the one single water hauling truck. And it is long as he owns that property, he can have that special use permit. Don't know if the county will go for that or not. I've. That's up to them. Uh, that's what the commission decided here. So then we have twenty four oh six West Gum for a zone change. This owner came in requesting this zone change, um, because he had gotten a citation a year and a half ago on it. And a year and a half ago, he came in, but he didn't finish all his paperwork. So it was never heard. But then this time we heard it and they, uh, they decided since he doesn't have any current violations on the property, why should we create? Something that's not allowed in the area. So they denied him. Uh, Ramirez and Sons has started my TP, uh, my TPF grant, uh, a new eye shut down so we can get that rehabilitation on that road from Main to First. From there, they'll be moving on to Avenue J. You have any questions for me?
Well, thank Crystal. On the billing with the water, is there some way we, we can designate one hydrant for both Ramirez and, and, uh, Construction, because, you know, they just open up a valve and they just.
They're actually supposed to meter. They're supposed to have meters. So if they're, if they're caught without a meter, you need to let us know because we can't cite them for that.
Okay.
And it is, that is the client. So.
Commercial today and when I, when I, when I, uh, proposed that, but that, that's always been Construction Zee, uh, spot right there where the church is at.
Yeah, they have a meter on that.
They have a meter on that. But I know that the other day, uh, Ramirez was over here on another, uh, hydrant. I just wanna make sure that, that we're.
On the high school parking lot?
First today, first. Yeah, and I just wanna make sure that we're accounting for all this water usage. Yeah, when they're doing their product.
Oh, make sure.
Stop these projects.
I'll get with the guys and tell them they gotta make sure they have some.
Okay.
Meters on those.
Anything further?
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, other than a few comments on some of the items in, uh, Scott's. I don't have anything new, but I can stand for questions.
Uh, briefly, I just wanna say, uh, congratulations to, uh, Chamber. They were instituting the July fourth party in the park. Uh, I went out there, uh, early to the flag raising ceremony. Cheprel Lake was literally covered in fishing derby participants, uh, probably the most that I've ever seen there. Uh, there was already a lot of people in the park. Uh, they had started the basketball, uh, tournament. And the mud run was just starting as I left. So a lot of activity, uh, I didn't make it back in the heat of the day. I'm sorry. But it was, it looked like it was a great time. And, uh, again, thanks to Fire Department for, Fire, which I saw, I think was just kudos to them. And, uh, it was a, it was a success. Uh, so continue to work on trying to spiff it up and green it up and grass it up. So. Anyway, uh, this moves on to our public comment. Uh, as usual, with the size of the crowd, I'm sure somebody may have something to say. But, uh, keep it to three minutes, please, and add your names when it comes podium. And, uh, since everybody's pretty much the usual crowd. So. Anyway, yes, sir. Mr. Boyson.
Yeah, my name is Ted Boyson. And I live over on, uh, Carter and Q. On the water, although, whatever you guys are gonna do about that. How come we're gonna be the highest in the county? Number one question. Number, number two, how far back came myself, all this, my water bill? Because outside of the, the wastewater, my water bill has not changed since oh seven. I paid me twenty three dollars for water. Now I'm paying thirty, almost thirty five dollars per sewer. And my, my senior discount is two dollars and seventy three cents for all free because I get the water sewer fraction. So, and like, come on back, Katie, I have three in my, my household. I have three. I got two teenagers living with me and myself. I water my yard at two o'clock in the morning for one hour. It does not go in the street until, unless the wind takes it there.
Let's check with Wendy tomorrow what your usage is. That way we can calculate what your bill.
Right.
Unless you know your usage. How many thousands of gallons you use a month?
I think thirteen, twelve or thirteen.
Oh, then your bill, my bill is your bill. What I just put up, your bill's gonna go up twenty two bucks or something.
Twenty two dollars for the water. What's, what's, see, we're gonna go up to.
No, both.
Fifty?
No, that's not right. It would go up, it would go up, it would go up thirty eight dollars and ninety cents. I went through this, okay? Uh, because your water is two dollars per thousand gallons above three thousand. If you use thirteen thousand as the city manager did, okay? Then your water went up ten thousand, you paid two dollars per thousand. So then two dollars times ten would be twenty dollars. And then it's a dollar eighty nine per thousand on your sewers. So that'd be eighteen ninety.
A dollar ten.
A dollar ten.
Oh, well, the other day she told us it was eighteen, it was a dollar eighty nine.
That sounds commercial.
For commercial.
So if you, if you. Yeah, mine's twelve or thirteen, I need water.
Yeah, use thirteen thousand, see where the circles are. That's right. Usage in thousands. So if that, if you use thirteen thousand, that's, that should be your bill. Well, I have, I have two.
Okay.
Twelve ninety four.
Then, okay, on this one here, it's forty two dollars eighty nine cents for the, for the water. Forty two dollars and seventy one cents is the sewer. Mine is twenty three dollars for the water and thirty one dollars per sewer.
So it'll go up.
There's a big.
Yeah, that, yeah, and I don't know why it wouldn't be.
You'd have to, like, with Wendy and Laura's apartment, she can see why you're, you know, the rates.
Because we have sewer rates less than our water.
Yeah, it shouldn't be that way.
Yeah, sewer is way higher than water.
I mean, not a lot.
No, not a lot.
My water's twenty two and my sewer's thirty one. It's a nine dollar difference.
No, sewer is twenty two and your water's forty two.
It's gonna even those up.
Look at my existing.
Hey, existing bill.
Look at my existing bill.
The sewer didn't.
Okay, I'm looking at.
Yeah, the reason my water's gonna go up more is because the rate structure's different.
And the sewer wasn't structured right to begin with. So the sewer hasn't been being built properly either. It was built a little bit higher than the water billing. It's just like the decimal points were in the wrong place and the gallons.
And from what I understand, there was a one-time, pretty large sewer increase, maybe five years ago, asked by the commission.
Yeah, it was almost ten years ago.
Yeah.
It was, it was.
No, it was thirty eight. Mine was, yeah, it was right up there. Right tomorrow.
Okay. Can I, can I figure your question? That's what we're gonna take this month. We're gonna try to get all of this lined out. So that you will see what your water bill would have been if it had it been correct for, uh, these next two months. And then what it, you know, then you can, through our hair, see what it will be when it's correct.
Okay.
And you should get like thirteen dollars off of that.
Yeah.
Percent, not two, ten percent.
I get.
The higher your bill goes, the more that ten percent.
They do, they do. But different.
They do not know how to add more. Because I just got my water bill with my daughter's. And it was dated for last month. Two bills, same month. The July, two bills, July bill that I just made, they were due last month.
Oh, we know. They didn't change the date. I know. It doesn't automatically.
That is correct. They can't dig that. That's correct. Sales tax, forget it. They need to learn to add it.
We need to get our stuff there. It's a.
It's a software.
I think before you start raising everybody's rates, you should take a look at your, at the computer. Because we have one guy that has a fifty dollar, uh, uh, bill. And the next one, he's got eleven thousand dollar bill. I think there's something wrong with the computer.
Well, that was the manual read error because they didn't run an extra digit. That was a human error.
That was the last bill of the final.
We agree. That's the reason, it's not, we're raising the water rate. I want everybody to understand that.
Okay.
We're going, this was, you've been getting free water for two years. If you, if you went above three thousand gallons in true usage, you've been getting free water and free sewer for that additional. We're going back to the way it should have been and it would have been, but we're gonna make sure we get it right before we do anything.
Okay, so we've always supposed to be getting, uh, paying more than Hobbs and everybody else.
I think if you look at their rates.
I, I have a friend over there.
Their sewer rate is double their water. I, I own property over there. And their sewer rate, which is half here, is twice what their water rate is. Look at the bill. Their sewer rates considerably more than ours.
Yeah, but their total bill, their residence is, is, is lower, is lower than mine.
I don't.
Overall, and the houses, my house, their house, same. Now, you know.
When you come see Wendy tomorrow, have him text you a picture of that bill and let him look at it.
We're, we're open to whatever, because. Clear and uncovering problems.
Right. Because I got my water bill, I could go back to oh, oh, seven, my first move yesterday. You know, that's why I want to know if they did audit. If we, uh, audit, how far back can we go?
Um, I know the increase in the water rates were changed in our ordinance in two thousand and eighteen. And they, yes, that's when we did change and we also adopted the two percent yearly increase, starting in twenty nineteen, when we adopted that in. That's in the ordinance itself.
I have somewhere a table of every ordinance and every increase going back, I think, to two thousand sixteen. I mean, I can't change where it's coming from. I could just put it back to where it's supposed to be.
We understand.
Because that was all passed by municipal ordinance.
So rather than, the discussion was, rather than implementing, let's ease everybody in.
Right, Minister.
And let's get it rocked.
And my suggestion is to get the computer and the program right before you hit the, the people and then hit the commercial. And start playing and start finding the people who are watering all day long and then just give the heat through them.
Well, they have a right to do that. They've got to pay for it.
But they're not.
Sixty days, Tim, to.
Yeah.
Make sure we've done that.
Okay.
Sixty days.
I just don't wanna get hit with a, from seventy eight dollars bill to a two hundred dollar bill.
Don't, don't.
Three thousand gallons.
You don't make a thirty thousand gallons a month. You're not. Your bill's gonna be lower than my bill. Well, how many calling cards do you have?
One.
So your bill's gonna be less than mine.
Exactly.
Right.
But, you know.
But if I, you're down the road by half, it'll, it'll, it'll be, uh, the well, like, do water and charge you some.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I mean, because the seniors that are on living income, they're not even a little fortunate to make a little more than the average. But still, you know, in our pockets and ten percent for seniors is not quite enough. I think that should be raised up in my book. At least for seniors and everything else.
We'll have a discussion in our next, kind of give everybody a note.
Right, and I'm just throwing out.
I know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, my name's Ted Boyson, Jr., and I understand you guys have a discount on water for senior citizens. Would it up for disabled veterans and those that are around my age? For social security.
I don't have an answer for that.
Because I am, I am a hundred percent disabled NVA and that is my own associate income. And when you guys, the water bill gonna go up, now that, now my money in my pocket is gonna go down.
Your water will won't go up.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just saying that.
What is used to be?
Well, if my water bill goes up twenty dollars, that's twenty dollars less out of my pocket than I can put in my cash account or whatever, or shop local or eagle.
We can throw that ordinance on for discussion and look at it. That it's not.
Absolutely.
A big deal.
I'm just, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just think about the disabled veterans and it's not just the, the senior citizens.
Yes, sir. All right. Anyone else? If not, we're moving on. All right. Bring us to our non-action items. All right, Ms. Ball, you seem to be popular tonight.
Uh, so I sent you guys the, uh, ordinance that we would like to change with the change of the wording in ordinance twelve point oh eight. Uh, the, there are several areas in there we need to change wording to make it all work. But the meat of it is, is to, if you look, if you're in that stuff sign, you cannot see anything coming down Love Street that's coming at you until you're out in it. That's a very big safety hazard. We have the same trough on cake between First and Second. If you're at First Street, you cannot see people coming off of Main Street because the trucks are lined up right there. Um, so that's why we wanted to adopt this ordinance. So I'm wanting you guys to review it. If you're in agreement with all the changes, if you're not, please get to me and get with me so we can work on it. So we can get this ordinance adopted and pushed through. Because it will have to be set for resolution to advertise, force advertise, and then adopt it after it's advertised.
Okay, I have one question.
Okay.
I wrote this.
Okay.
All right. I didn't understand. All right, I didn't understand why, or I didn't understand why the wording of self-propelled vehicle, I believe it's self-propelled vehicle.
That is.
Yeah, and I'm looking at it, I'm sorry.
Which, which paragraph is it?
Well, I don't remember now because I read it earlier today and I just didn't understand. And it's been added, so I'm looking for it, it's in, it's in red somewhere. It was about pulling it up onto the curb if it, anyway, it was just the wording of self-propelled.
So I can change that, it's not in red, it's actually in twelve-point-oh-eight-point-six-zero.
Oh, okay.
Um, or, yeah, point zero-six-zero, it is unlawful for any person to park any vehicle designed to be pulled by a self-propelled vehicle on any street alley right of way. That's been in there, all I did was add the right way, that's been in the ordinance since it was written.
Oh, okay.
So if you want me to remove that because it doesn't make sense.
Well, it didn't make sense, so.
When I can't pull my fifth wheel trailer up, just park it in the street and drive off.
That's right, that's what we wanted to avoid, is fifth wheels being parked out in the street, unhooked and just left there. Because then if you've got a fire, emergency or anything, there's no way to get something underneath and hook back up, pull it out of the way. Can an ambulance get in there and help you or a firefighter? Might make it a push.
Also, you have twelve dash zero eight zero two zero and twelve dash zero eight zero. Same one. B, exceptions, all special events held by City of Lovington, Lovington Main Street, Lovington Economic Department, Lovington Chamber of Commerce. And I believe it should be any other entity permitted for special event.
Well, because it says that you can, uh.
Because to me, that's, I read that a couple of times and that's kind of discriminating against any other.
Okay. Well, except it's specified by ordinance, so any other entity besides those would need to get.
Special permit.
Special permit.
Right.
So, but I can add that.
To me, that's what it should be.
And he brings up what I didn't forget to put the museum in there. So if they have any special redents.
So you would like comments on this?
Yes, so I can finish getting it written up so we can work on getting it up.
There's some others.
Okay. Send them to me so we can go over.
Here's one of the things I'd ask you to consider too is, anytime we either adopt an ordinance or change, I think it's really important to think about what's the, what's the issue we're trying to address? And do we do it thorough enough and clear enough, or we just do it with such a broad brush that it also has an adverse impact on a lot of other things? And, and so if the issue is these trucks, then I think we can focus in on that issue and make it work. It could be a safety issue because you can't see from the stop sign, there could be an issue just the weight of the vehicle on the load or outstanding as you curve. But it's really important to think about what's the problem? Do we already have an ordinance right now that's gonna fix it? And if we don't, how do we create that ordinance that's specific to this? So you can read through here in a black book, my woodpile from a wood burning stove on top of a water line that the city has in the yard, well, I'm in violation. Is, is that really what we were trying to do? And I know you can't look at every single situation, so, but, but that's really important when you take a look at that. The other thing is, when we talk about, in the first part of this, not being able to use an alley. We really have to be careful because if we let some, you know, person A use the alley, and now we don't want person B to use the alley, that is gonna create a problem. And so we really need to think about, is, is this the language we want? Because there's a couple of things that come to my attention right away, where we have people using alleys that we have either approved. Formally, or just looked the other way, that could come back and cause us a problem. Because if I'm parking one of these trucks in an alley and you send me a ticket, I'm gonna say, well, why are you treating me different than this other person? And it's pretty obvious out there, so we, we really need to focus, is it the fact they're using the alley? Is it the fact that it's a safety issue? What are we really trying to eliminate? And, and that's what I hope you can really focus in on and think about. Otherwise, we'll get another ordinance put together that goes, you know, the pendulum swings to the other extreme and then, then we've got to bring it back and so. So we, we don't always take the time to do that, but I would encourage you to do that. A little bit.
Yeah. Yeah.
But, but they've got a, so basically what they did is, is their footprint extends into the alley. So if we took that alley away, they would have a smaller footprint and may not be able to do what they do out front.
That's not right.
Well, what I, what I'm saying is, if I get a ticket, I'm gonna say, that's an ECO. There's a lot, a lot of things in there that, and it might seem, and do I want the car washed? Sure, I don't take my car there because I never wash it. But, you know, and they're great, it's GRT.
That's why it doesn't rain.
That's all. But, but, yeah, we, you know, we need to help that business, but are, are we then setting ourselves up for the next problem that's gonna be? Because those people driving those trucks, and I would agree, if I come to that intersection, and I've been, I've been there and I've noticed that before, it is a, it is a problem. But those people driving those trucks are just as interested in making business and making this a prosperous place as, as the car wash. So we really need to think about, what is it we're trying to fix, what problems we're trying to fix?
So we want them to park on properties.
Yeah.
Not on. It's what we're trying to fix.
They're parking on their property those ones.
We want them to park.
They're parking on the street.
On their own property.
Well, that's what they were doing on K or.
Okay, they're still parking in the, it's right away where they're parking.
Well, and then they were parking on the right of way in front. And they do it on seventeen.
So I guess, yeah, the issue would be, do you cite them for parking on the right of way? Or do you cite them for creating traffic hazard? And, and so you could cite them for creating a traffic hazard perhaps a little bit easier and with less risk to us in the long run? Than if you just said, no alley park, people parking the alley.
Well, the alley park is good.
Right. Right, like we.
They're never supposed to park.
I, I think the place behind service, what you're saying is, they're on their property, right? But they're, but their truck is on their lawn, but part of that lawn is our right, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Every bit of that lawn is our right.
Yeah, and, and so then, we're gonna be put in the position to track down. And, you know, my parking pickup there, or my sports car, or my motorcycle, that's gotta get cited too. Are we prepared, if we change that ordinance that way, to go out and, and do it? Everybody. Park it on the right of way, okay, creating a, maybe my motorcycle or car, whatever, doesn't create that same traffic issue, so.
That's why it's pointing out for a growth rate.
Is your car motorcycle fifteen thousand gallons?
Because that's why we specify.
I wouldn't be able to pick it if I dropped it now. But what, what I'm saying is. But, but you really need to think about it, it may not seem like a problem now, but it could be.
We need to put some thought into it, is the main thing.
I mean, we can look at what the city of Hobbs did because they adopted a similar ordinance about six months ago. And we can see that they had any problems with it in the meantime.
Right, yeah, they may have somebody that, oh, when, if you do this, you might want to think about it. We obviously didn't, and now they're having to deal with it, if there is such.
Yeah, I'm not saying we didn't, I'm just saying, if that's what you really want, we have to be prepared to enforce that. And is, is that gonna face the problem?
All right, question, any other questions, discussion? All right, thank you, Ms. Ball, on that. All right, city manager. Or Shannon, I don't know who this is. Shannon, okay.
Well, I did look at the original personnel ordinance, number two-eighteen, if you see the packet. Where it says that holidays can be added with the regulation. So we want to go with ordinance, come on, change, if the state may authorize our addition, additional holidays, which I think is what, um. Commissioner White wanted to introduce Good Friday.
Yes.
And city manager wanted to introduce students.
So we look at that, and the way I read that, and of course it's highlighted also, in ten dot three. We need to just add those holidays into this list. Because it says, may include the following, and so we just need to add those. And then whenever we adopt, we can choose from this list, is that correct? Is that the way you read it?
Well, um. Holidays may include the following, and I know that. Those aren't the ones that were said. It's a federal holiday, but we also change this look to, um, Easter is, I call it Easter. Uh, Good Friday is not a federal holiday, that is something to think about, it is a religious holiday. Um, Jew is a federal holiday. But, I mean, we don't have to modify the ordinance.
She normally, the city normally has other.
With the shoes floaters, yeah.
No.
Yeah. Which is.
Two floating holidays, or if I wanted to take two days.
Good Friday, you want a Good Friday to take this.
Right. Or if you wanted, uh, harvest's Day, you could do, take that one. Okay, anything further, Shannon, on that? Any questions for Shannon?
My concern is that it is a federal holiday, which has been added, it's a bank holiday, and we haven't made any adjustment, not that we necessarily have all federal holidays, but it's a.
Which one, I'm sorry. Oh, well, we've already adopted for this year.
No, I, yeah.
In the future, yes, I think we're gonna, we're gonna revisit this again. And before next year.
She's just, I, I asked her to vote on it.
No, no, I understand, and I. For this current year or for next year?
It would be for the next.
We're right past twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah. So can you throw that on the next meeting too, that resolution to vote on?
Get it out of the way, they don't have to remember.
Yes.
Works for me.
Can you want for both of them? Both of them?
Yes.
Shannon, anything further? Moving on. Uh, Shannon, logic tax.
Um, yeah, this is just to inform the commission that logic tax will be, have, have a, a, a need for parks and rent board. So we will add it to the paper, and if y'all have any money that you would like to recommend or you know, the, um, on logic tax board. They have to be in the hospitality and choose that right.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, um.
There's three, there used to be three levels, there was hospitality, there was, uh, basically food and beverage, I don't, I think it was business, is how it was listed. And then there was one as large, right? Yeah, I don't, is it in here? Well, oh, did I not say, well, hospitality is logic, that, that's included, there's still, okay, so, anyway. What position is open to be?
Well, he was in TV door, he has a RV park.
His, his hospitality, yeah. So it would need to be a hotel, RV park.
Now, just Cam, he's moving.
I'm still moving.
Yeah, yeah, he's going.
That all you had, Shannon? Any questions? Moving on, all right, uh, Kate? Who's the alcohol?
I believe that's Shannon.
Oh, okay, you're a popular person, I'm not saying.
Commissioner Bo, line down here. And, um, to get it in line with, like the state. The state's new, all it is. And really, what we, we would be taking off would be, be, uh, hope that we can serve on Sundays. We had a line in there, I think it should be in here.
I see it. Wrong point. Five point zero eight, point zero five.
Yeah, and just take off the study from the hour to two in at midnight. And also, the, the election day, that is not, that's not a state law to do that, if y'all want to read that as well.
As far as your information, Shannon, where do you get that from?
That's our witness. That's the.
As far as.
Yeah, that's our.
As far as taking it off and everything, the information, when you receive that from that, we can do that.
I'm sorry.
As far as being able to remove that, where do you get that information from?
Oh, um, I just looked on, on the website, the state law, and that they had, uh, passed that Sunday sales are.
Right. Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure I have it all secure.
So if y'all would like to go forward, we could never pass the ordinance change.
Actually, we have to be an action item.
We have one action item too. So I'll put it on any action item to, have a better chance to, or to publish.
So, one of the things I want you to take a look at, uh, looking at this, we talked about Sunday. So Saturday night, eleven fifty-nine, we're good. Clock's right, midnight, right, and it says Sunday between midnight and two AM, right? So that's midnight to two AM, right? Then the other part on this says, or any Sunday between the hours of two AM and midnight. I'm assuming that's from two AM all the way around the clock, and I think that was highlighted here.
It was.
So at four in the morning on Sunday, do you want meat to be served with alcohol? Because that's what it says, right?
Well, what I was thinking in that is, it's not illegal for a long time.
On, on Saturday night, we stay on the two, two AM.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree, yeah, but, but I think our, our existing records, yeah, I want you to, to, to look at that, to make sure.
We breathe wording correctly.
Because I think that's highlighted, if I'm not mistaken, like, so that I could be. So, so. Yeah, I think we were taken, we were taken out, uh, it looks like your paperwork's written out, so. Think about that and really decide if that's what you want. I think we do need to.
Two A M to. Eleven A M. I generally do eleven sometimes, but.
Well, you know, we're at a different time, so, say, but if that, if, my point is if that's what you want, okay? But I want you to read it and understand it before we pass it. And then have to come back and say, well, that's really not what we intended.
But they initially worded properly.
Yeah.
And that's what I liked with the truck when I was like, look at the whole ordinance, not just that one paragraph you're trying to change. Because there could be some in the rest of the ordinance that don't like you, but.
Yeah, and there may be something on that that puts other zoning changes that we have an effect.
Yeah.
One little change, and, and what I'm trying to tell you is figure out the problem, address that problem. Because if you do it with a wide brush, it's going to affect ten other ordinances that we have. And then we've got to fix those problems.
Would you be able to help word that properly?
Yeah, if you can give me some idea of what time you want me to be able to be served on Sunday starting. Well, with the. Whatever state.
State law is.
That's, that's a good way to say, we're just going to mirror what state laws is, right?
And what the change is, and I can give you the history, I can give you the current, which is, uh, sudden, I mean. This municipality, when they chose in nineteen eighty-four, you could go buy the drink. Or you could go, uh, uh, you could pack each, excuse me, on Sunday. But we, we as a municipality chose neither, I remember right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we had no Sunday sales, uh, at least by the drink, until they changed law two years ago. And so now Sunday is open state law, you don't have, you didn't have to change it by resolution. So now we can adopt it and just mirror state law and it will designate, and I believe it says, no earlier than seven A M on Sunday. And no later than midnight, if I'm not mistaken.
Eleven P.
Is it eleven? Okay, all right. But I, I haven't, I haven't read it.
That's, that's the thing to do. Take a look at state law and say, hey, with that match, so.
That's what we want to do. Let's go ahead.
Is that all, is that all anyone wanted to change? Just to mirror state law on our.
On all of it. Just in case we have a certain footage and ends up. How far away you have to be from then establishment to say.
Well, we double, the city doubles the state.
Right, I know, I know.
All right, anything further for? It's I, hearing none. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, uh, in consideration of interim police chief Donald Jackson's salary. As a patrol lieutenant, Donald Jackson was making approximately seventy to seventy-two thousand a year. With the five percent raise that just went into effect, the police chief's position pays approximately eighty-nine thousand dollars a year. Seeing as Mr. Jackson will be taking on or has taken on increased responsibilities during such time as interim chief. Uh, it would be my recommendation to possibly raise him to eighty thousand. A year rate as interim until such time as either becomes permanent chief or steps back and becomes a patrol lieutenant. Again, it's, it's right in the middle of the range. He has taken on extra responsibilities.
Any questions, Commissioner? Hearing none, all right. Bring this back, Shannon.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, uh, this is just a renewal for both, uh, on this resolution, the Main Street Professional Services Agreement and on that's resolution.
We have to, I have a motion first.
I'm sorry.
Just get hungry too.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution twenty twenty-three, dash oh sixty-two, Main Street Professional Service Agreements.
We have a motion and second, uh, on this, uh, resolution. City head.
Uh, this is the same, uh, agreement that you've seen. Some minor award has been changed. We made sure to include, uh, three point, three point one nine, one additional event. That promotes tourism to Lovington of any size. So basically with all the four service agreements, we're trying to make sure they are similar. They include an extra event. In the case of Main Street, it's, so the main event is smoking on the plaza. This would have a second event and obviously, as we previously discussed, it's fifty thousand a year. But that, that fifteen thousand above thirty-five thousand is dependent on the larger stats.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Shannon, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dravio.
Yes.
Commissioner Dinkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Bo, yes, air roll.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution twenty twenty-three, dash oh sixty-four, in the County Museum for the Professional Service Agreement.
You have a motion, anti-constitutional resolution, discussion.
Uh, the same as.
Things above.
Yes, same as the above.
Any question? Shannon, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Y, yes. Commissioner Dinkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Doob.
Yes.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Air roll.
Yes. He's got it.
I have a motion. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution twenty twenty-three, dash oh seventy-two, approval of interim. Police chief's salary at eighty K, mailing.
We have a motion and a second on this resolution, discussion. Hearing none, Shannon, roll call vote.
Commissioner Dinkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Y, yes. Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dravio.
Yes. Yes. It's fine.
Motion pay bills.
Second.
I have one question. I want to know what. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, if I could point out on page four of sixteen, the hundred and forty-three thousand to ever solve technologies. That is the SCADA system payment or part of it, and that came out of COVID funds.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. The refunds, are them all for the insurance?
Yes.
I thought so. And, uh, another one, vendor ten five four nine for Constructors Inc. Wash water manhole on Avenue D.
That was where we paid Constructors Inc. to replace and lower a manhole in the sidewalk. And to redo the sewer line because we were short on sewer staff. And we did not have, of course, the material or the staffing to fix those that are there in Avenue D.
Okay, so that wasn't, that wasn't part of the project, it was separate from.
Yeah, because we didn't, uh, N M D O T did not want to go through change orders and us add that to the ticket. They asked us to actually independently contract with them to do that.
Okay.
So that's what we did.
Okay.
And if I could point out on page fourteen, uh, fun summary, federal COVID line item for four hundred and ninety thousand. I believe that includes three hundred thousand dollar ambulance.
Three hundred and thirty-six, so.
Yeah, so three hundred and thirty-six thousand, that number is the ambulance. And then the rest would be for, uh, SCADA for this quarter. And that ambulance, I believe, should be here two years.
Uh, hopefully sometime next year. They have the, uh, Kevin chassis, they just have to build, get it on the production line.
So we are using those COVID funds. We don't have an exact number, but I believe we're down to probably half a million or one point three. And we can spend for the.
All right. Anything further? Sorry, okay. I didn't want to sit around and, uh. Hearing any further questions? Shannon, roll, uh, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dinkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Y, yes. Commissioner Dravio.
Yes.
Air roll.
Yes. With that, under the agenda, we are in your.